I'd like to call to order the November, October ninth meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Monica. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
And to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Chaco.
Here.
Commissioner Fresco.
Here.
Commissioner Lambert.
Here.
Commissioner Landris.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
And Chair Tolkien.
Here.
We'll have the Director's Report.
Good evening, Commission. Want to start off by some good news and bad news. Unfortunately for us, our Planning Commission Secretary Sheila is leaving our department and moving on to Public Works. So it's a great thing for Sheila. It's a promotion for her and we're very happy for her. But we are sad to see her leave our department and leave the Commission because she's been a great help. And but we wish her well. Upcoming at your next meeting, which is next week, and by the way Sheila will be with us through the end of next week. So we'll see her again. She's not completely gone. So next week, there's a appeal for 1700 Ocean Avenue. It's telecommunications equipment that the hotel wants to install and one of the condo owners across the street appealed it. There's also a resolution of intention for the adult use cannabis ordinance that the Commission talked about, I think at your last meeting. November sixth, there's a fence wall hedge modification appeal for 1125 Harvard. And then a development review permit for 1673 Ninth Street. I think, oh, he's not here, but one of our commissioners asked about the Michigan Avenue Bike Way. Was that you? Okay, I thought it was our other commissioner. But it is open now, so good news.
And it's it's fun.
You tested it? You tried it? Okay, good, good.
It works.
That's good. Some recent ARB actions, so several mixed-use projects went to the ARB on September sixteenth. Twenty-three oh seven Lincoln, which is the project at Lincoln and Pearl. That item was continued for further refinement. Two projects next to each other on Santa Monica Boulevard, eighteen oh one and eighteen nineteen Santa Monica. Those projects were approved with conditions. A project at sixteen seventy-three Ninth, that's Ninth and Pico, that project was continued for further review. And then a project was approved at nineteen oh one Wilshire. So all four of those are mixed-use projects. Upcoming at the Landmarks Commission on October fourteenth, a certificate of occupancy for the Miramar. What's that? What did I say? Oh, you're right. Certificate. Yeah, yeah. Surprise. Certificate of appropriateness for the Miramar. And then also another certificate of appropriateness for fourteen thirty-eight Second Street. And that's the youth hostel on Second and the downtown. Recent City Council actions, September twenty-fourth, they approved the housing element Phase Two implementation. And then last night, October eighth, a study session on the Olympics and then also another study session on public safety. That meeting went to, I think, two?
Three.
Three, three, three in the morning. So we have some tired staff people here. And then upcoming at City Council on the twenty-second, Promenade Economic Recovery Emergency Ordinance. So these are more code changes to allow more uses, make the process easier for things in the downtown area, downtown core. It also includes some additional allowances for signage on the promenade. That same night, the appeal of the landmarks designation of the Compass Rose at Santa Monica Airport. This is an appeal that's been pending for three or four years?
Five years.
Five years. So hopefully we'll get that one done. Milzak contracts going. And then for sixteen items, there's direction to look at increasing ADU sizes up to twelve hundred square feet. And then there's also direction to look at Third Street Promenade Entertainment Zone. This is in response to a state bill that was passed, goes into effect January first, that would allow kind of like open container areas. But you have to have a city ordinance in order to to impose it. So we'll be looking at that. That concludes my report.
I have a question. Where are we, or have we already done it and I've forgotten, on this subdivision of ADUs and the sale of ADUs?
Oh, that was already done on the September twenty-fourth meeting.
It's on the way to City Council.
It'll become effective, second reading was yesterday, right? And then so November eighth, yeah, it'll be effective next month.
Terrific. Is there going to be some kind of, whoa. Like double whammy when I can hear myself. Is there going to be some kind of public outreach information sharing about that because that's pretty significant and people need to know about it?
Yeah, we're putting together both information, handouts, guidance and stuff like that from the Phase Two implementation. So yes, there will be communications around the new things.
Terrific. Thank you.
I have questions. I have questions, yes. Let me start with the, oh, I don't know if there are any easy ones. Study session on the Olympics. When's the pier bridge coming to us? Is the pier bridge coming to us?
Why wouldn't it?
Because we're infrastructure?
No, I don't.
No?
No, it's not coming to you.
Okay, it doesn't need to?
No.
Okay. Because we technically do infrastructure.
No, the, yeah, it's not coming to the to the Planning Commission.
Where is it going? Is it going to anybody?
It's Landmarks. It's, yeah, it went to Landmarks because of the impacts on historic resources. But otherwise it went through sort of the capital project process.
Okay.
But the Commission, the Planning Commission itself is an issue, you know, you're not approving anything to do with the bridge, there's no.
Okay. And it's going to the Pier Board for impacts on?
I think there's been consultations, yeah, with the Pier. There have been extensive consultations with the Pier Board.
Okay.
And for the Pier businesses and the impact on their operations?
Yeah, yeah, okay, awesome. And then I thought it was the April first edition of the Santa Monica Daily Press, David. But it was a Thursday since we last met.
Oh, yeah.
I was, that was, that was a joke, right? That was just a bad joke. Right? I was dreaming?
No, that was, that was true. But yeah, I'll still be here for another few months, so.
Okay, good.
We could talk about that later, but yes, I am, I'm going to be retiring at the end of the year. So, yeah.
You promised you wouldn't do that.
No, I didn't. Yeah, I don't recall that.
Do you see how he looks like he's just slightly floating from his chair? I'm going to, you know, yeah, we need to keep you for a while, but congratulations.
I should make this announcement that anybody who wants to speak before the Commission should give a chip to the, to the should give a shit to the Secretary of the Commission before the, and we will hear them before the agenda item. And these items have to be things that the Commission can hear as part of, as part, under their purview of what the Commission does. Otherwise, we can't discuss them. Okay, any comments from any of the Commissioners?
Did you want to ask about Planning Commissioner announcements, Chair?
Yes. Any Planning Commissioner announcements?
Thank you.
Sure, no, I'll be, I'm assuming I'll be attending the UCLA Arrowhead Conference this weekend, which is on mega events this year. So again, focused on the impact on housing and transportation and related issues of mega events like the Olympics, the World Cup, the Super Bowl, all of which are coming to the region. I believe there are some City of Santa Monica staff going. I'm not sure who else is going.
Now it's time for public input. Is there any? I didn't get any chips, so. Consent calendar is nothing. And then there's the study session is an update by Public Works on Airport Conversion Project Phase Two Outreach. The staff report, please.
Hello. And good evening. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Amber Reshane and I am the Principal Design and Planning Manager for Architecture Services within Public Works Department. We were here a number of months ago. It was probably February-ish. And so we're just here tonight to give you an update on where we are. We've got most of our team members here in the audience, so that's really great as well. So again, thank you so much for having us. All right, so we're going to go over a little bit on how Phase One went and how Phase Two is going. And where are we headed when we get to Phase Three? And if you have any questions, totally fine to interrupt. So a little bit, we always start with what are we doing with this project? Just in case folks are new to the project or process. All right, so this is because we are allowed to close the airport at the end of 2028. So we want to figure out what we should do with it before that. And so it's, it's almost 200 acres, it's 192 acres of land, you know, two miles from the beach that the city wholly owns. Seventeen acres is in Los Angeles, but we own all of it. We are working, the reason for, oh. It looks like the screens went out. Okay, there we go. So this is our project website. If you have not gone to it yet, I encourage you to do so. There is a ton of information on there. But this project is focusing on getting to a preferred scenario through a robust community engagement. We're having the project centered on a great park, consistent with Measure LC. If those of you were around 10 years ago and voted for or against it, or at least remember it. And it was the one saying if part or all of the airport closes, then you can only have recreation, public open space and/or educational, cultural or recreational facilities that are existing can stay. So we're keeping all of that in mind. You probably understand this slide best of all of the Commissions because it talks about the Sequel Process and EIR and all those fun things. So there was some visioning that was done in 2010, 2013. That really only looked at the 40 acres on that southern portion of the site. So this is the first time we get to envision the whole 192 acres. As I mentioned, this process, kind of that teal bar in the middle, we've done Phase One and we're in the middle of Phase Two, let's call it right now. That is to get to that preferred scenario. Phase Three is when we start drawing, so we haven't even started drawing yet. We're not, we're not at the real fun part yet, but we're at the words part, which is also important. So we'll get to three scenarios and then get down to a preferred scenario, assuming all goes well, which we all know things go in lots of different directions, but that's our intention. We'll get to that preferred scenario by the end of next year, so December twenty-five. And then we'll start the EIR and Sequel Process. Depending on how Phase Two goes, and we'll get into why, that'll probably tell us how long that EIR Sequel Process will be. But it gives us three years to get through it and any lawsuits that may occur. So we think we're still on track, but it's a very close deadline. We have to do the EIR in order to close the airport, even at all. So it's a really big deal that we want to get to a project, a preferred scenario that we can study, analyze, and then have an EIR. It's California law that there was an airport up in Sacramento that it's, it's well documented at this point that to close an airport, you have to do the EIR because you're sending the airplanes somewhere else. And there's impacts on that. So once we are allowed, once, so basically at that time, Council will vote to certify the EIR, vote to close the airport and vote to approve the preferred scenario that was analyzed. So they'll do all three of those things at once. We anticipate that to be anywhere from the middle of 2028 through the end of 2028. We just have to see how that Sequel Process goes. And then we move into implementation. And that's a whole nother section, but we'll talk about that. So this is the five-phase process that we're working on right now. You can see we're in Phase Two right now. Each of these phases builds on the previous one. There is a whole set of community engagement at each phase. So if you were able to join us for Phase One, we had a big community event, we had four pop-ups, we had a survey. We had virtual education sessions that came out on the website. Phase Two is similar. Our community event hasn't happened yet and we'll get into that in just a little bit. And we'll talk through how Phase Two is shaping up. Then Phase Three is when we start drawing. Again, there will be a lot of community engagement with meetings, boards and commissions, task forces, all, all of the things. Pop-ups and big community meetings through Phase Three A for the three scenarios. B is the preferred scenario. And then we'll get into sort of the logistics of what does that phasing look like or timing and those sorts of things. This is a little bit more detailed, so you can, it's probably easier, Jing has the PowerPoint, so if you want to make a PDF of it and then you can dig in, don't worry. And Phase Two, we enlarge it in just a second, so don't strain your eyes. But this is kind of how things are sorting out with those activities that I just discussed. So Phase One highlights. We had, as I mentioned, that big community workshop, which was May nineteenth, that was our big kickoff. It was in Clover Park. Hopefully some of you made it. We had four pop-up events that were spread around the city. We went to a lot of the farmers markets on this one. We had two virtual education sessions that we put out. So this is a one-way communication. It's basically something you watch on YouTube to understand the history of the project, what site constraints are, things like that. So the two of them focus on slightly different things, the scale of the project, things like that. We had 1,100 people view them, and this was back in June, so that's really exciting. We had almost 2,000 people complete our survey, which is by city standards, really good, right? That's, that's a pretty good level of engagement. We also got 300 comment cards, either through the website or in person at our, at our pop-up events. And so we've got a lot of material to kind of churn through, which is great, but it'll lead into why Phase Two is designed the way that it is. We'll go through a little bit of the survey because that's where we can really dig into the data a little bit more, right? Because people are self-identifying. So we did have representation from all five of Santa Monica's zip codes. Nine oh four oh five, not surprisingly, is our most robust zip code in respondents. We had, you know, we had a pretty good amount of folks. But if you look at our youth vote, it's like nonexistent, right? Even under 34, we're looking at like 100 and whatever that is, 109 responses out of a survey that was almost 2,000. And so this tells us where we're focusing. So you'll see in Phase Two that we're really focusing on getting youth and family. Because this park is going to be, right, it's probably not even my kids, it's their kids and their kids and their kids. Because this is a multi-generational project. We will never get a chance for 192 acres of land that can be developed into whatever we want, right? Around those recreational, art, cultural and educational topics. So it is, it's, Phase One told us a lot of things and it also told us who we were missing. Phase One told us 147 different uses. That's a lot, but we were really excited to hear that. And I've included these as well on our website. You can get the full PDF if you really want to dig into who said what and what versions of things and all that. It's all on our website. But I just pulled out what the uses that were either in the survey, right? So there's ones that we kind of said, hey, what about these? And then there's a whole bunch of uses that other people, that people wrote in as well. Which is, has been great. So I'm going to go through a little quickly there. But out of these 147 uses, right, that's a whole lot. And so Phase Two is designed around helping us prioritize and refine them before we get to guiding principles. We'll talk about that in just a sec, but these are the types of things that we heard. We did have a fairly large contingent that came out and said, keep the airport. But Council has been very clear on do everything possible to close the airport. And that is the focus of this project and this team. We are responsible for closure and then what happens after that. There is a different team, right, Stelios, Diana and crew who run the airport. So if you have questions on like existing leases, that's not us. Or things that are operating up until 2028. They are charged with operating an airport. We are charged with closing it and figuring out its future. So Phase Two. Did you have a question? Oh, no, okay. So this is a little bit more enlarged. The way that Phase Two has shaped up is because we heard all of those things, we need help prioritizing. So instead of doing just one survey, you'll see that we're going to have two surveys. The first one, which if you haven't taken it, please do, it is on our website. It does take a while. It's about a 20-minute survey. It's not short. But what we're asking is, out of that whole list, tell us your top 15 and your bottom five. Because that will help us start to hone in on, do people just not love a thing or do they hate a thing? Right, those types of questions is where we're really trying to dig in. You'll see a series of questions about sustainability. And you'll also see a series of questions that are sliders and agree, disagree for things like this park should be mostly passive recreation, agree or disagree. This park should be mostly active recreation, agree or disagree. So there's a number of questions to help us understand all the things that we heard in Phase One. That'll help us get to those draft guiding principles and we'll dig in a little bit more. So that's the website. You can see the survey button right there on the home screen, that bright orange thing. And there's a wealth of information on there as well. If you go into Learn and Engage or Resources, that's where you'll find those virtual education sessions and the other items that I mentioned. This virtual education session, so number three, is launched. And it focuses on sustainability and the site opportunities and constraints. You'll see basic park financing kind of options or strategies kind of sprinkled throughout each of the virtual education sessions because that is important. This project has been tasked with being self-sustaining as well as all of the other sustainability council goals and the great park goals that were set up in the park conversion report. That was, it was called Appendix D. It's also on the website. So that came out of the Parker Max Master Plan that never got fully implemented because pandemic. But you'll see all of those goals. Those are kind of the goals of the project and then this sort of brings that through. It talks also about the soils and hydrology and the topography and all sorts of things about the site itself. So it's interesting. We concluded our pop-up events last Saturday, so these were all the ones that we went to. Locals Night on the Pier, Pancakes in the Park, Americana in the Park and the Mini Fall Festival. We've also gotten some great contacts with the PTA Council. And so we've actually been able to go into the schools finally, which is really great. So we've been to Grant, we've been to McKinley, we've been to Edison. We've got an event coming up with Will Rogers. We think we'll be able to get to Jams tomorrow. And we're finally making inroads with the high school as well. So if you have any contacts in any of those places, we'd love any help that you have as well there. The Phase Two A survey originally was going to close. Oh, I changed the wrong thing. It launched nine sixteen. I got ahead of myself, didn't I? Sorry about that. It launched the week of nine sixteen and it was going to close on 10 sixteen, but we just extended it to 1020, which gets you through the weekend. We thought that might be a little easier for. We thought that might be a little easier for folks. So it's not this weekend, it's next weekend. And so at midnight, that's when all survey responses need to be in. And again, this is just a, an image showing as an example, right? This one happens to be, what are your least, what are the five things you least want to see? But we have it also for the top 15. You will note, I know it's probably hard to read, where it says in yellow and bold. So there, we did hear uses that would or could, some of them we know, would trigger a ballot measure or would require a ballot measure. Some of them we're not sure of yet. So we're working with the city attorney's office to understand that fully, and we'll have that ready by the time we have guiding principles. So things like, there were a lot of people that came out and said housing. We know that housing would require another ballot measure. And so we've noted that here. So while you see a use, we're letting people know this, this would require the voters to go forward. But there's, and there's medical clinics and permanent supportive housing or homeless services. There's ones that are very clearly that we would, we would need to do a ballot measure. But there's some other ones like restaurants, right? Restaurant technically is a commercial use, but concessions are allowed in a park. So where is that line? When is something a restaurant and when is something a concession? So we're trying to understand those sorts of things. So as people make choices, they at least know we're not sure about these, and, and some of them we are. So we tried to be transparent about that. There will be a second survey that comes out with the draft guiding principles, and we'll talk about that in just a sec. The last thing that we wanted to plug was we have these community conversations, so micro grants, so $500 micro grants. These are based on what the DEI team did when they were doing the Equity Plan. So basically, there's a very short, very simple application that says, who are you, where do you live, what are you going to do with the money, and what's your connection to the community, essentially? And what we want people to do is take the $500 and either rent a venue or order food, provide childcare, translation services, whatever it is that facilitates your meeting with at least six folks in your community, and host your own meeting. We give you the questions and we give you some background information, and then you host the meeting with your people. Send us some photos and send us the answers to the questions. And that's it. It's a way for folks in our community that don't normally show up to community meetings for whatever the reason, whether they feel welcome or not, if it's in the language they understand primarily, if they feel welcome, or they've got job, kids, right? There's a whole series of things that can, can take away why someone would not participate in a, a more formal community meeting. And so we've actually had really good traction on these. We've got 16 applications right now, and we can handle up to about 20. So if you know any local community groups that might benefit from this, please share it as well. So all of that leads up to this. So there's doing, we're doing a lot of outreach right now to the community and to our boards and commissions. Survey Two A will all come together and then to get to the draft guiding principles. So the draft guiding principles are what we owe to council, or the guiding principles are. So we'll take everything that we've learned in this Two A phase. We're going to take November to synthesize it down and come up with a draft to say, we heard all these things in Phase One, we prioritize these things in Phase Two, here's what we think we heard. So we'll come back to you in December, hopefully, whenever that meeting is. If it's not canceled or moved, just let us know. But we'll come back to you with the draft guiding principles, so you can then comment on those, right? Tonight is really disinformational. The big community event, we're targeting December 7th. That will be a more traditional, right? Big room, lots of breakout tables, boards and sticky dots and all sorts of things to say, here's what we think we heard in those draft guiding principles. Yes, no, more, less, whatever it is. We'll go through all of that, and then in January, we'll pull together the final guiding principles or the final draft. And that's what we'll take to council at the end of July, or that's our plan. And then council gets to weigh in, right? And say, yes, more of this, less of that. They get their say basically, but we'll show them the final guiding principles. And then, next steps, I talked a little bit about Phase Three A, right? That's the fun one, especially if you're an architect, landscape designer or other, where you start to draw things, right? So these are big bubbles. Once council tells us what we should be drawing, then Sasaki and team, that's who our consultant is on this project, that's leading the engagement and the design, we'll work with them to create three different scenarios that are very different on purpose to elicit comments. We'll go through another round of community engagement. There'll be another virtual education session, probably be another survey. And then we'll move into that preferred scenario. And so that's Three A and Three B. And that's where we are in the process now, and we'd love any questions. This is the project email, so if you ever want to email us, that goes to all of us. It's easier to remember than all of our names. But I'd love to take your questions.
Go ahead.
Thanks. So there is one, I took the survey. It's not easy.
It's not easy.
Yeah, it corrects you a lot if you don't do exactly 15 and exactly whatever.
And we tried to do a counter. We tried all sorts of things.
Before you go to Jams tomorrow, can I make a suggestion? There is a glitch.
Oh.
So if I'm on the website, smacproject.com, and I go to the site and I say, oh, I see the little button that says English or Spanish, and I select Español. Then I click on Encuesta de la Fase Dos, right? If I click there, it brings me to the survey in English. That, that button should be rewritten so that the link it opens adds the, adds the tag SGlokal equals ES-US.
Okay.
And you should make that correction as well. If I click on Mantente Informado and then realiza la Encuesta, the same problem occurs. Encuesta de la Fase Dos, and boom, I'm back to English.
Back to English, okay, thank you.
So those two buttons, if you can update them, I think it's really important. I'm glad to hear you're going to the schools. But that, that's, that, that seems key to me because...
That's great feedback, thank you.
Yeah. Have you also talked to the Boys and Girls Club, the Y?
We have reached out to them, but we have not had good traction in figuring out a way to engage best with them. I know my kids both participate in Boys and Girls Club. So localized a little bit, but not...
But in their newsletter?
That we've asked, we've requested, we've put it in, we've sent it to, I think, the right people, but it's never made it in.
Okay. And has the district been asked to just do a blast?
So the PTA Council has. It's shown up in Peachjar, and I think today I got Gail, Gail's information to get to her, and then hopefully she can send it out.
If she can do a note from, from Dr. Shelton just to the whole community saying, we want your input, I think that would be very helpful.
So it's almost. I think we're at the step of like, here's what I would say. Change the template as long as, to whatever you'd like.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
I just wasn't fast enough. I missed when you said the preferred scenario idea has to be done, and then you're going to start the EIR. When is that date? When's the end of it?
So the preferred scenario, we are, there we go. We're expecting to have the preferred scenario before December of next year.
December of, okay.
December of next year. And then we would start that EIR sequel process in early '26, which will give us three full years before Closure Day.
Fair, cool.
Or anticipated Closure Day.
I just want to say that in 1926, when they bought those original 173 acres, they said the exact same thing you said, that this will be a once-in-a-generation chance to buy a parcel this big, so...
Yes. We, we don't have a good track record, but we're trying very hard this time to actually make it happen. So we're going to continue trying, but noted.
We should have bought the beach, too.
That would have been great. That would have been great.
One more quick note. No, I have, I have one more quick one.
Yes. Hi. Thanks for the presentation. As a new commissioner, I've got some basic questions that may have been answered before. But could you clarify the situation with regard to the airport functions itself? Because you've mentioned that the council has given direction
Yes.
to explore as much as possible alternative uses to the airport. But has the decision already been made for its closure? And is that a certainty? Or is the, is that decision yet to be made?
So both, kind of. So in, I think it was 2000, so the Measure LC passed in 2014, as I mentioned. Then there's a consent decree that was signed with the federal government in 2017. And then you see almost immediately that council takes an action to say, shorten the runway and do everything possible to close it, and even wrote an ordinance. It's like 11026. And if you look in our website, we have all of those documents if you want to dig into them. And that ordinance says, do everything possible to close it. However, you can't close it without an EIR. So they, they have not taken the step to say, it will close on this date because they can't yet. Hence why we have this process and this project, is to get to what are we doing? Go through the environmental review, and then council can certify the EIR, vote for actual closure, and certify the plan.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Do you have a master schedule for timing for this whole thing? Because the airport can't close till December 2028, right? After the council votes.
Yes.
And then there's a cleanup.
Yep.
You can't build a park until you clean up the mess. It may be there.
Yep. We are investigating. So currently in this phase, the city attorney's office is working diligently to figure out, to limit the exposure of the city on the airport land. And so there is an active project to figure many of those things out so that we're prepared for when closure happens, and we know what we're headed for as a city.
Okay. Sean had a quick question.
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on the EIR question. By the way, that link also doesn't work if I go to, if I go to the site and I click on the resolution to close SMO, it's a broken link.
Oh, my goodness, okay.
The consent decree works. Measure LC, no, Measure LC doesn't work either.
All right, we'll check all those links, I'm sorry about that.
So in the context, and I'm framing this as to get to closure, okay. Technology is changing rapidly, and I was interested and intrigued that on the survey, only one respondent said EVTOL, which is essentially vertical takeoff and landing, electric vertical takeoff and landing. By the time we get to 20, I mean, there is a company going into business to do this now.
Yeah.
And I will say the quiet part out loud, which is that I'm really worried, based on what you said, that they're going to get a foothold, and then suddenly our EIR is going to have to account for us not wanting a business that we didn't want in the first place, but technology forced upon us in the middle of the, in the middle of this process. So my question is, how early can this EIR get done relative to a January 1, 2029, or December 31st at 11:59 and 30 seconds closure? Because the longer we wait, the more new technologies are going to put pressure on using our airport, and then we're going to have to account for them when we don't want them anymore.
It, it's a good question, and we are very much keeping an eye on things. But we'll know a lot more once we get through guiding principles, where council says draw this.
Yeah.
We'll have a much better handle on how long that EIR will take. Because if we're looking at big venues, like ice rinks are on there and big amphitheaters, right? Things that you have to construct, and there's a lot of traffic impacts and things like that, or potentially traffic impacts, that's going to be a longer EIR potentially, then it's all going to be a meadow. Now, I don't think either of those are, you know, fully accurate that the whole thing would be anyone.
But you were describing us accounting for the removal of airport operations in that EIR. So when do we get to define the baseline of what airport operations are?
So I, I think that's defined now, right? It's basically the runway. So if your business is dependent on the runway, it's the runway and the FAA tower that are going to close at the... Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead.
From a secret perspective, let me, since I'm already here. So Amber's doing a great job.
Yes, she is.
She's doing a great job. But just, you asked about what, when EIR could get started. So technically, we can't get started until we have a stable project description. And so at that point, what triggers this existing environment is when we have a stable project description and we issue the notice of preparation. That freezes basically the existing conditions in place, and that's when we start assessing what the existing conditions are. That's pursuant to state law, so...
And are we responsible, and is like the count something that is part of existing conditions? Or is it just physical infrastructure?
It is, you mean air traffic count?
Yeah, air picture.
Yes, it would be. And so, you know, they, the state law, secret court cases have said that, you know, if one year is off, for example, if the pandemic occurred, that's not normal conditions. So we would have to make sure that the conditions that are in place at the time the notice of preparation is prepared, that those are quote-unquote "normal" conditions, that we just didn't say, hey, everybody stop flying and put a moratorium on it. So we have to count for normal existing conditions.
Okay. And then as part of the, as a part of the project description, right? That we, that allows us to set existing conditions, is the introduction, because I know this is on the table, there are some conversations about roadways, right? Whether they're, whether they're multi, whether they're multi-use roadways, like bike, scooter, or they're actual streets through that property that this, that, that is under consideration. Is that considered part of the project, or is that considered separate from the project?
It's not. So we will be looking at all those things. So once we know kind of what our guiding principles are when we start drawing, there is or does seem to be support for opening up this airport land, right? Whether that is to bikes only, bike and ped, is that with buses or mass transit of some kind? I guess we would also consider if it was for cars. But once you get to West LA, I don't know if you've ever been on Stewart Street over there, it's very narrow at one point, like it's not even Kerbin gutter on one side. So we would have to take all of those things into account. But as we start drawing, I think that's when that'll come out.
Okay, no, it's more, I mean, this is like leading into the safety element, right? Because we have, it's a known, it's a known constraint in Santa Monica that we have not enough southbound routes in case of a real need for them. I mean, you could argue that we do, we could just drive less. But we do have, you know, potentially a real need for them, so it's a question of whether... I was asking whether those considerations, the streetscape, are part of the park project? They are, they're part and parcel of the park project.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And we work closely with Rachel and team about, you know, what are all the things that should be in there or not for all the variety of things that planning is working on?
Last thing on this, last thing on this is going back to the VTOL issue. I think the, you know, questionable little secret of the VTOL issue is that they are very loud on takeoff and landing. And so when we do an EIR, if we are dealing with noise pollution concerns, which we may or may not be able to regulate pre-closure, because we're, we're subject to...
Well, we do now. We currently regulate noise pollution.
Right, I mean, within limits, right? Within limits, we will be able to establish the reduction of noise pollution as a benefit in the, right? So we do have some tools to protect ourselves. That's what I'm getting at, okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I want to preface this by saying I grew up in the Air Force and I love airports and planes, but it doesn't really matter. I, I have a couple of questions about the EIR. My understanding, my understanding from what you said is that the EIR is actually addressing the closure of the airport, correct?
The closure and the plan. So the closure is, will be one piece of it. Because the, the closure will have to study, right? Where do these planes go when they don't come to KSMO? But the meat of it will be, what does this plan need? So we're doing both at the same time.
So there will be a plan in place, and the EIR will look at that.
Yes. So that's what this preferred scenario at the end of next year is, will be the basis for the stable project description, and then we'll analyze alternatives as well.
So the other, that question relates to that. What if the majority of people who present their ideas favor some level of housing production on the airport site? And that's clearly not allowed by LC. How are you going to handle that?
So that's when it definitely would have, I mean, council will have to make that decision, right? LC is written to say, until the voters do something. So we would have to go back to the voters with a measure of some kind to say, right, is this a tweak to LC? Are we clarifying something? Or is this a, we want to add a whole new use to LC?
Right, right.
Or we want to say, here's our preferred scenario, and we want LC to now say that plan is okay. But we have to go to the voters. So it's, it's, it's a really interesting process. It's not just the city, right? Where we would normally have a general use update and zone, right? There's no zoning on the site now, a specific plan. There's other things that we would typically do. But this is going to have to also, if those uses are directed by council to include, we know then that we would have to plan for another ballot measure.
And then my, my last question, and it relates to the safety element, as Sean pointed out. The safety element talks about the airport as sort of a storage area for emergency stuff, equipment, supplies, what have you. But I, I think it also serves a very vital role in terms of transportation in and out of Santa Monica. If the, if the roads are all compromised, medevac, bring supplies in, et cetera. Will your plan account for that?
Well, the, the safety element addresses the existing conditions now and the forthcoming future. Because the airport planning process is still in play, we haven't really determined what the emergency, you know, utilization of the airport land is. However, I know that that is part of the survey that is being, that is out there is whether or not the airport land could be used for emergency functions and operations. And Lindsay's call is actually here as part of our O E M team. She can answer questions about what specifically it does, but we've talked before. And right now, it does provide aviation, transportation, emergency services if necessary. Hasn't been utilized currently or in the past. However, we, most, most aviation related transportation happens to the hospitals. So when there is a medical emergency, usually airplanes go directly to hospitals.
You mean helicopters, not airplanes?
Helicopters, yes. And Lindsay can speak to it, speak to it. But I don't believe that in recent years, we've seen like aviation emergency uses.
Well, I guess the situation is we have a huge earthquake and everything's in ruins and lots, lots of people need to be evacuated. I don't think the helipads on top of St. John's are really going to cut it. So where at the airport are we accounting for that?
But one of the other considerations with the scenario you just provided is that we don't know the condition of the runway. So if the runway is damaged significantly during an earthquake, then it's not usable for a small craft anyway. And there's lots of different locations where we can land helicopters other than the airport.
Uh huh.
And so in the discussions about the airport, we definitely are urging the, the planning team to consider emergency and public safety uses as there will be an increase of demand of just general public safety services. And we want to ensure that there's flexibility for emergency response operations using whatever is envisioned. So for example, if we're designing a new community center, that community center should be designed to shelter standards, that where we could house a large number of individuals for emergency sheltering and have it be fully A D A compliant with all the bells and whistles, et cetera, et cetera. We need to make sure that we have space for helicopters to land. But I would just say that we do not operate in a silo in emergency response operations. We work in close coordination with our partner cities and the county. And so air operations would be a full team effort.
Do you include the red cross in your discussions?
Pardon?
Do you include the red cross in your discussions?
Yes, I'm a board member of the West L A Red Cross.
Good for you, good. You also need to consider where animals are going to go.
Yeah. You're, yes, that's part of our planning process. Animal control is a close partner too.
Because I remember during North Ridge, we couldn't take our animals to the shelter. They had to go to the pound, which, so we didn't do that.
They, they can now, most shelters will accept animals.
Okay, thank you.
And everyone should evacuate with animals.
So just a, just a quick reminder that you do have an agenda item on the safety element this evening. So if you could please try to direct your comments about the safety element to that public hearing and keep this on, just the discussion about that staff has brought to you. That would be Brown Act compliant. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a couple more questions.
Sure.
One of them related to the one I asked before. But you, when you talked about guiding principles, and I'm assuming that they're intended to provide the evaluation framework for the scenarios in the next phase. But would they provide the beginnings of a program of sorts in terms of uses?
Yeah.
So there would be some narrowing of use choices
Yes.
through that process?
Yes. That's the intention, because right now it's ninety four, we had one forty seven, we're down to ninety four. That's still too many, right? So we've got to prioritize.
I don't know, it's eight hundred and ninety four.
There, there's, yeah, there is a lot of room, but it's going to get chewed up very quickly.
The other question was, has there been, or is there any information available at this time related to any contamination that might impact or influence the choices of uses?
So we're, the city attorney's office is investigating. There is the Boeing site, which is on, I think it's called Geo Tracker. So you can check that one out on the, on the public portal. But we don't know yet. That's phase two is a lot of refining, prioritizing, what do we know? And then we'll have, we hope to have that information because we wouldn't want to start drawing and say, great, day one, we're going to have a farm over here and then that's highly toxic soil. So we need that information to start drawing.
So sometime during the early stages of phase two is when you expect to have a, phase three?
Yeah, we're in phase two, so phase three is next.
So not during the scenario planning process?
That is phase three.
Okay, sorry.
There we go.
Got it.
So we're in phase two of like setting the stage, figuring out what we've got, right? Remediation, hydrology, soils, all the things. Phase three is when we start drawing, so we want to know what we're drawing on top of.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Fresco.
Oh, I'm sorry, I left my mic.
Good presentation, by the way.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
So that's. I guess we postponed, or it was pulled, eight B. Nine, there's no items.
So that was the conclusion of eight A. And yeah, item eight B has been pulled by staff.
Yes.
Right.
And let's go to the staff administrative items, none. So let's go to the public hearing, which is recommendations to the city council that the city council adopt amended safety element of the city's general plan and amendments to the zoning ordinance to implement the updated safety element of the city's general plan. Perfect timing.
Good evening, commission. We've come full circle back to the safety element. So I'm here tonight along with my partner, Lindsay Call, in Office of Emergency Management, because she's been very, very helpful in preparation of this draft safety element and I thank her for being here and answering any questions. So just to provide an agenda for tonight, I'm going to go over the brief background of the safety element. It's been a while since I've been in front of you talking about the safety element. So I'll provide some background on what it is, as well as what's in the draft of the safety element and then answer any of your questions and leave you with two recommendations that we have for council. So just to begin, the safety element is a mandatory element of the general plan. If you recall, the general plan is like the blueprint of, for the city. So every city and county must have a general plan. And within that general plan, there's seven required elements or eight required elements, which are listed above here. As you can see, we've already done, we did the loose back in twenty ten. We just recently did the housing element update. And then here we are with the safety element update. And so we also have the open space, noise historic preservation and the conservation elements, which are all formed together, the general plan of the city of Santa Monica. So why are we updating the safety element? As you know, the old, the safety element is old, the current one that we have. It was done back in nineteen ninety five and of course, things have changed since nineteen ninety five. There's new information on Santa Monica Fault. We know that there, somewhere along the northern portion of the city, there is some fault. There is evidence of a fault. We also have new FEMA flood maps that show properties within the flood zone, as well as we have more information about climate change effects. Also, we want to make sure that the safety element, since it is part of our general plan, we want to make sure that it is updated and integrates with other city plans that we've already done, like the Climate Action Plan and then the housing element that we just recently adopted. And of course, as I mentioned, we are doing the safety element not update, not in a silo. We are doing it concurrently with the update of the local hazard mitigation plan, which is still in progress. And the timeline for that is about early twenty twenty five. But we have been working in coordination with Office of Emergency Management to make sure that these plans are in full alignment and that they are consistent and speak to one another. And of course, the safety element is not only a requirement of the general plan, but there have been some recent legislation making sure that our safety element is up to date with regards to climate change information, evacuation routes, as well as identifying residential developments that have perhaps egress, ingress issues. And then of course, just recently Governor Newsom passed a suite of state legislation, including one that mandates that safety elements include a, a chapter or a section on extreme heat and that we address extreme heat. So a lot of people have been asking, what is the relationship of the safety element with the local hazard mitigation plan, which is also being updated? So you could think of the safety element as kind of the, the larger, broader guiding document with overarching goals and policies. So similar to the local hazard mitigation plan, it addresses vulnerability and risks associated with hazards, hazards in the natural and built environment. Say the safety element is a requirement of state law. While the local hazard mitigation plan is not necessarily a requirement of state or federal law, it is required to qualify for funding from FEMA. So that's why it isn't, it is very important to have a local hazard mitigation plan because if we didn't have one, we wouldn't qualify for a lot of FEMA grants or grant funding. And then so the safety element may incorporate the local hazard mitigation plan. The ideal world is that they speak to one another. And so with this update, we've been working in coordination, as I said, so it does speak to one another. These plans will. And the safety element is required now under state law to be required, update, to require to be updated every eight years in alignment with the housing element. I want to note that the housing element is not an emergency operations plan. So things like how does, you know, how, how does evacuation plans work? Or how do evacuation, uh, uh, how do emergency operations and evacuation routes work specifically are not addressed in this document? And neither does the local hazard mitigation plan. And rather, they're both kind of overarching guidebooks or handbooks. And then the local hazard mitigation plan is required to be updated every five years and includes specific mitigation actions. It's considered more of a living document because it is required to be updated more frequently rather than the safety element. And then within that, and Lindsay will speak to that, within that local hazard mitigation plan, there will be directives about specific emergency operations plans that may be necessary to deal with each specific hazard. For example, if you have a tsunami event, what happens during that tsunami event? How do we respond? So out of that local hazard mitigation plan, there will be directives about these specific operations and response procedures. So the safety element addresses a number of hazards in the natural and built environment. Things like geological issues and soil issues, as well as seismic risks. Climate change effects such as drought, extreme heat are also addressed, as well as fires and flooding. Additionally, we added in airport-related hazards because we know that that has been a concern for a lot of people, as well as hazardous materials sites and properties that utilize hazardous materials. So just to take you, take you back to where, where this process started. It started back in spring and spring of twenty twenty three, which started with the initiation of public outreach, some study sessions with commissions. And then we launched into preparing the technical background report for the, for the safety element. And then it took about a year before we were able to produce a public draft of the safety element in August. And so that was published for forty five days back in August. And so here we are at the planning commission and we are seeking your recommendation for, for adoption to city council. So what's in the safety element? As I mentioned before, the safety element addresses things like geological and seismic hazards. One of the things that is addressed are steep slopes and landslides. And what the safety element does is provides an analysis of the areas that are vulnerable to landslides and, and landslides. And these include the areas like the Palisades Bluffs, the slopes that are flanking the I ten freeway and certain areas of the city that are more sloped, like the northern part, portion, which are closer to the Santa Monica Mountains. And so we analyze those areas. And then the safety element includes a number of actions to address these issues, including ensuring that there's regular monitoring of the bluffs. While Public Works does do some monitoring, there is not a scheduled monitoring. And so, you know, it's not written anywhere. So we want to make sure that, you know, there is regular monitoring and assessment of the bluffs. Also, you know, we want to make sure that when new projects are developed, that they are constructed in accordance with, you know, the soil conditions that are underneath the site. And so right now, the city, every single time a new development pulls a building permit, they have to provide a geotechnical report in compliance with the city's geotechnical guidelines. Those guidelines were last done in twenty ten and so they're right now in the process of being updated. So the safety element calls for updating these guidelines every eight years. In addition, because of the sensitivity of the Palisades Bluffs, the safety element recommends continuing to prohibit development from infiltrating their water near the bluffs and within the aquifer protection zone. As I mentioned, the Santa Monica Fault was designated back in twenty eighteen. So whenever a project is developed within this fault zone, they must do a fault rupture study. This fault rupture study may involve some trenching or some spoorings. That's to make sure that if a project is constructed within the zone, that is not constructed directly over the fault. And so to date, more than twenty fault studies have been done and we have yet to find evidence of an active fault. That doesn't mean that it's not there, we just don't know exactly where this fault is. As I, as I said, like this zone, this zone just marks where the California Geological Survey thinks the fault zone is or the fault traces are. So we don't know exactly. However, even if you're not within the fault zone, that doesn't mean that you're not susceptible to an earthquake. All of us here at the city have, are, are susceptible to an earthquake. We've all felt the North Ridge earthquake. And so, and we are all long overdue for an earthquake, as you know, like, you know, it's all over the media and there is a ninety three percent chance that an earthquake of six point seven or magnitude or higher will occur in the next thirty years. And we luckily have not had one. But however, we are long overdue for one and it is a matter of time before an earthquake, a large earthquake affects us. And so the safety element includes a number of actions, including continuation of the city's seismic retrofit program. We've been pretty successful with this program. I think over fifty percent of the buildings that have been identified under this program have been retrofitted. And so those numbers are in the safety element. In addition, the safety element calls for prioritizing seismic retrofits in the public infrastructure and facilities as part of the capital improvement program for the city. We also have a liquefaction zone. So liquefaction is basically when the soil loses its strength and stability and it collapses because, you know, during an earthquake, the soils get, gets shaken around and then they lose their strength because maybe there's a high groundwater table. And so that's what liquefaction is. And so we found that the areas that are susceptible to liquefaction are the areas along the coast, as well as the small portion of the eastern portion of the city, near the Bergamo area. And most of this stuff is addressed as part of the city's building permit process. As I mentioned, when a project does pull a building permit, they are required to do a geotechnical study. And so that usually alleviates a lot of these liquefaction hazards. So we would continue requiring projects to do these geotechnical studies and we would require that the city update its geotechnical guidelines at least every eight years. For flooding, the FEMA flood zone is basically in the area where there is a one percent chance of flooding in any given year. It's, they call it the one hundred year flood zone. The one percent chance just means like during the life of a mortgage, a thirty year mortgage, there is a twenty six percent, that equates to a twenty six percent chance of flooding. And so most of this FEMA flood zone is along the coast, as you can see here. Approximately a hundred and thirty two parcels are located in this flood zone. We implement federal requirements, flood requirements through chapter seven point six eight of the municipal code. What this means is that there's special design restrictions, regulations, as well as requiring property owners to purchase flood insurance. And then within the, within the city, since we are a coastal city and there's lots of faults that surround us, either offshore or near, near shore, we do, we are susceptible to tsunamis. And so the tsunami hazard zone extends about seven hundred to fifteen hundred feet inland. There's about two hundred and twenty eight parcels located in the zone. There's three types of tsunamis that can happen. The worst case is the local kind of tsunami where we have less than an hour to, before the tsunami hits to shore. And so this is the worst case tsunami. And then the regional one is. And then the regional one is where we have about one to three hours before the tsunami gets here. And then the distant one is we have adequate warning, we have about three hours. So those are the three types of tsunamis that could occur. One of the things that the Office of Emergency Management exploring is the installation of warning sirens at various locations along the beach. So that if a tsunami does, you know, there is warning of a tsunami, that people along the beach can be quickly evacuated. And there are tsunami evacuation route signs along the coastal area, if you haven't seen those yet. We also have dams and water storage reservoirs near the city that could contribute to flooding. The city of Santa Monica owns the Riviera Reservoir. And then the city of L.A. owns the Stone Canyon Dam. Those are required to be maintained and inspected per state law. However, if you could see here, in the event of an earthquake or any kind of disaster, if the dams or the reservoirs break, you could see that the inundation area for Riviera Reservoir doesn't really affect the city all that much, it just kind of affects the golf course mostly. However, the Stone Canyon Dam in City of L.A. could result in about one to ten feet of flooding in the eastern portion of the city. As you can see there, it covers about the area near Bergamot. One to ten feet is, you know, approximation. It depends on really the severity of the dam failure. So it could be, it could be less, it could be more, who knows? And so one of the safety element highlighted actions is that we would regularly assess our own city reservoirs in accordance with state law and perform the maintenance as required. And however, we will also work in coordination with the city of L.A. to make sure that their dam is up to code. With regards to fire hazards, while we don't have any wildfire hazard severity zones, we are located next to the Santa Monica Mountains. As you can see in this slide here, their zone is directly to the north. That doesn't mean that if a wildfire happens, it just stops right at that border, of course, you know. So wildfires can get out of control and so they could very easily cross over the border if a wildfire was to occur in those zones. So that's to be noted, as well as smoke. You know, we've had lots of smoke effect from past fires in the Santa Monica Mountains. And so the safety element calls for educating, encouraging residents living within the proximity of this wildfire zone to implement safe fire practices. In addition, consistent with the fire department's strategic plan, the safety element recommends potentially citing a new fire station in the northern portion of the city. And this is for a number of reasons, not just because of that area is more prone to wildfires, but also because in the event of a natural disaster or emergency, the city could very well be cut in half, so to speak. There's northern portion and then there's a southern portion, especially with the freeway and the light rail line running right through the city. And so the recommendation was to potentially explore citing a new fire station in the northern portion of the city. And so in terms of fires, we're lucky here in that we, because we're an urbanized area, less than three percent of the cause to the fire department are related to fires. Fire risks are really dependent on a number of factors, including building occupancy, the size of the building, the age of the building, as well as whether or not the building has built-in fire protections. So the safety element really just continues a lot of the great practices that we have now already, which is implementing a regular updates of the fire code. And then we also, then the safety element also establishes that the standards of cover study, which is what the fire department commissions to ensure that they have enough adequate resources, this study that it is done regularly. And also, the last thing that is up for consideration is a new impact fee on development to address the increase in fire demand since there is a substantial new amount of development, housing development coming in. Fire department has expressed their interest in adopting a development impact fee to offset some of the increase in demand. And with regards to hazardous materials, we mapped out the hazardous materials sites in Santa Monica and there's about thirty-five large quantity generators of hazardous materials. What this means that these are sites that handle or generate enough hazardous materials such that they are regulated under our fire department's CUPA program, the Certified Unified Protection Agency Program. I think I might have butchered that, but they are regulated by the fire department. Nonetheless, they are inspected to make sure that their hazardous materials are handled properly. However, these are not our concern. The biggest concern really, I think, is the sites, the unidentified sites with soil or groundwater contamination, such as the industrial conservation district, the Bergamot area, as well as what we talked about, the airport land. There's unknown soil and groundwater contamination likely. And so we would want to make sure that if there is such a new development that is occurring, that the development first inspects for potential contamination. And so one of the things that we are recommending that planning commission do is recommend a text amendment to section nine point three, one point one nine five of the zoning ordinance to add in the requirement that if you are a new development, new multi-unit development in the non-residential districts, that you be required to do a phase-one environmental site assessments. In the past, these phase-one environmental site assessments were done as part of CEQA, as part of the EIRs. However, because now a lot of our housing projects are administrative, they don't require this, you know, this assessment. And so that is why we are recommending that it be included in the zoning ordinance as a requirement. And I just want to note that this requirement is already part of the downtown community plan, EIR, and so it is enforced in the downtown, it's not in the rest of the city. And then lastly, not lastly, but next I want to speak about climate change. And so I mentioned that now state legislation requires that the safety element address extreme heat. We've experienced this recently, and so we've used the latest models to project what extreme heat means, I mean, what the extreme heat effects are would be as a result of climate change. And we are lucky in that we are along the coast here, so we are less affected than the rest of the region. However, that being said, because we are more coastal and we're generally cooler, most of our households, a lot of our households do not have A.C. I, you know, I don't have A.C. in my apartment either. And those days where it does get extremely hot can be extremely uncomfortable and hazardous for people who are vulnerable, like seniors and the populations who are sensitive to heat. And so also, the neighborhood with the least amount of tree canopy is Pico and the Mid-City neighborhoods, and those generally are, you know, are affected by those actually. Those areas also have the largest populations of vulnerable households. And however, the greatest canopy loss is occurring in the R-one districts in the northern section of the city. While they are mostly, they have the greatest tree canopy, they are also experiencing the greatest tree canopy loss. So the safety element includes recommending that the city prepare an extreme heat action plan to include potential cooling requirements for new residential units. Note that like our building code does require, or the building, building code does require heating requirements, but it does not have cooling requirements. And so one of the things that could be addressed in this extreme heat action plan is cooling requirements, as well as other actions that could address vulnerable populations that are sensitive to heat. And then also with regards to drought, we've been in a drought for ten years, between 2012 and 2022, until the fourteen atmospheric rivers hit us. And so luckily, we are no longer in a drought. However, climate change does, will continue to cause fluctuations in the water supply. So as you all know, we already have our, we have an adopted water self-sufficiency goal. And so the city's Water Resources Division and Office of Sustainability and Environment have been implementing projects to get us to that goal. We're a little bit behind, we recognize that. However, they're still continuing to work on these water self-sufficiency projects. The SWIP has already been implemented, the first component of the SWIP has been implemented. The next component, which is installation of storage tanks, for example, at Memorial Park, will next be implemented. And so the city continues its work on water self-sufficiency to ensure that we do have an adequate water supply in times of drought. And then also, another thing that we, the safety element highlights and includes is the action to consider emergency water storage in the event of a natural disaster because if an earthquake happens, pipelines break, people don't have access to water. And so the safety element includes an action recommending that we provide some sort of emergency water storage in the event of a natural disaster. In terms of extreme precipitation, I mentioned the fourteen atmospheric rivers that came through. And so what we, what we don't know is how much climate change affects precipitation. We just know it's expected to vary. And so however, what we do know is that climate change will increase the frequency of atmospheric rivers. They're supposed to increase it by forty percent. And so the safety element does call for the city to identify prioritized flooding sites, which means area where we see a lot of flooding as a result of heavy storms. And that we prioritize these sites for maintenance upgrades to the stormwater system so that we can mitigate them to prevent flooding after a severe storm. And then lastly, the climate change effects section of the safety element includes a sea level rise analysis. New sea level rise maps were created in accordance with the recent guidance that was issued by the California Ocean Protection Council. Depending on the scenario, you could be a high emissions scenario where it's a worst-case scenario, we could see a sea level rise of almost seven feet, six point six feet by the year 2100. And as you can see, basically, the Santa Monica here would be almost wiped out with that. And so the beach parking lots would be affected, as well as a lot of, many of the beachfront properties. So the safety element highlighted actions include completion of the local coastal program, which my partners in City Planning Division are currently working on, as well as working with other local, regional and state entities, as well as nonprofit entities on other sea level rise strategies. You might have already seen in the news that the Santa Monica Dunes Project was just recently approved and that would help a lot with sea level rise resiliency because those dunes will help mitigate a lot of the impacts from sea level rise. And then lastly, I want to speak about airport hazards, that was what we just talked about. So in terms of aircraft accidents, it's generally not common. We see about, in the last thirty years, we've seen about a total of thirty-three accidents reported at the airport, which is about one per year. And then in terms of noise, we do have the Santa Monica Fly Neighborly Program and we operate under the, we have a grandfather noise ordinance, actually. And so it's one of the strictest in the countries. And because of our Fly Neighborly Program and our ordinance, noise complaints have been decreasing and it decreased to its lowest in 2022. The biggest thing of concern, as you guys had all mentioned, was potential soil and groundwater contamination due to the former Douglas aircraft uses, as well as aviation-related uses. We know that jets for a while were flying, or jets do use leaded fuel. We're transitioning off of that. However, there could be underlying contamination. We know from phase-one assessments or phase-two assessments conducted at nearby properties that there is underground contamination. I think there's a thirty-two-hundred airport, there is underground contamination for sure. So those, as Amber had mentioned, those assessments are currently being done. We don't know the extent of contamination, but they will be done. And so the safety element will require that the city perform comprehensive environmental site assessments on the airport before anything happens. So that is part of the safety element. And then just actually, before I move on from there, and speaking of emergency operations and services and planning, got a quick question about, you know, what happens to the airport in terms of emergency services? I know OEM has been talking to the airport planning team on kind of their needs of emergency storage, emergency operations, what they would need. And so we are closely working with them on that. And so they know, and that is why you kind of see that question on that survey about emergency operations because that it will be considered as part of the future airport planning effort. And then I want to speak about what we do here at the city in terms of disaster preparedness and emergency response operations. And I apologize to Lindsay if I'm getting anything wrong, I'm going to do my best because she's the expert here. But disaster preparedness, emergency response operations is a very complex process. It's a large coordinated effort between various departments and agencies. Office of Emergency Management really leads it. And then they work in coordination with fire department, police department, public works and other relevant agencies that's necessary. We do have mutual aid agreements. So to the extent that there is a natural disaster, a big enough disaster, that we need aid from other cities and other jurisdictions, we are able to capitalize those mutual and automatic aid agreements. And then OEM also provides a lot of emergency information and emergency preparedness information online, as well as through social media and outreach events. They also provide a community emergency response team training that's free to city residents, employees. There's also a variety of emergency alert systems out there, which includes Santa Monica Alerts, which is operated by OEM. But basically, if you sign up for that, you get emergency notification either through text or email so that if any of the thing does happen, you know what to do. There's also the Alert L.A. County Systems, E-nine-one-one, and other variety of National Weather Service systems out there. And then within the, within the safety element, one of the requirements is identification of essential facilities. And so there's three kind of categories of essential facilities. There's the first category, which is what you see here. These are essential to government response, or essential for government response should a disaster happen. So things like hospitals, fire stations, emergency operations center, City Hall, City Hall East. Those, and then animal shelter that was mentioned, that, those are all considered essential facilities because should there be a disaster happen, we need a place that, you know, that the city can coordinate, people can receive medical care, the animals can go to. So that is why they are all identified as essential facilities. And then we have the second level of essential facilities, which are essential facilities critical to transportation. I think the airport was mentioned as one. So Big Blue Bus Yards, for example, might be another that is essential to transportation facilities. So you'll see the table of essential facilities within the safety element and they're classified as to what operations or use they would serve. And then the safety element also identifies a list of potential emergency shelters. Which shelter is selected to be used in the event of a natural disaster or emergency will be situational. I mean, Lindsay cannot say, hey, we are going to Santa Monica High School in the event of, you know, an earthquake because we don't know the condition of that facility should something happen. And so this list is not exhaustive, it could include others. And not all of these will be open following a disaster. And so the selection of the shelter will be entirely situational, depend on the number of people needing shelter. It'll depend on the location relative to where the event or the disaster is happening and the structural safety and the stability of the facility. And so you'll see a number of facilities here that includes, you know, government buildings to schools, to, you know, community centers. And then in terms of evacuation routes, we don't, you know, we don't evacuate unless it's absolutely necessary. And so the Office of Emergency Management does coordinate the evacuation routes if necessary with, you know, other agencies, fire, fire, police and so forth. So there are evacuations routes identified in the safety element. These are potential evacuation routes, I want to emphasize that. So the actual routes will be situational and dynamic. It will again depend on the context of the situation where, you know, if this road is damaged, then there's going to be a need to go to the other road. And so these evacuation routes are just as, you know, they're just illustrative in the sense that they may not be the actual ones you use, so. So the safety element includes actions to continue emergency notification systems via various media, including online. We also recognize that not everybody might have access to the internet or the computer. And so also calls for other resources as well, communicating through other resources, either through, I don't know, signage or digital signage and things like that. The safety element also includes an action to see if maybe emergency parking restrictions could be implemented during disaster evacuation events. Also, there was a comment discussed about, you know, what about people who can't get into a vehicle, who don't have access to a vehicle? So the safety element- So the safety element also includes an action to collaborate with other operators of multimodal transportation, um, options such as, you know, maybe you scoot your way out or you bike your way out. And so, um, it would establish an action to coordinate with these other alternative modes of transportation, um, these companies. So lastly, I recommend, um, going to leave you with these two recommendations, which is, uh, recommend that the city council adopt an amended safety element and as well as amend the text of the zoning ordinance to implement the requirement for the phase one environmental site assessment, um, for consistency with the safety element. So any, happy to answer any questions and Lindsay is also here to answer questions too.
Thank you. Um, I have a few, few, they're pretty simple, just questions really. Um, on page two thirteen, you show the progress of doing the seismic retrofit on existing buildings.
Right.
And what concerns me is the soft story, which I assume is most of the dingbat apartments in Santa Monica. And there's only a fifty-seven percent compliance rate, which worries me. Do you, do you have like a deadline by which they have to comply?
As, as far as I know, there are deadlines and so I'll need to follow up with our building and safety department on what the current numbers are, but there is a deadline for this, for each category of buildings.
Yeah, that, that's correct.
It would be good.
And we could actually, um, I know we've done this before, have someone from building and safety come and give the commission an update on where we are with the seismic program.
That's a great idea. Um, I have a couple of other questions. Um, Bergamot looks like it's sort of in the, um, the path of a whole lot of stuff. It's, it's in an earthquake zone. It's in a, an infiltration prohibition, meaning aquifer protection zone. How do we, how do we deal with all that when we're looking at fifteen to twenty-story buildings being proposed in Bergamot? What?
Thirty-two story.
I'm sorry?
Thirty-two story.
Are you serious?
Yes.
I guess if you're above the second floor, you're okay though.
So all new development has to comply with our building code. And also, as I mentioned, if you're, if you're building anything new, you're required to, um, you're required to do a geotechnical study. And so that geotechnical study will look at the site specific conditions of that property and make sure that the, includes a list of recommendation and design measures to make sure that that building is designed to mitigate for those kind of impacts.
But how do you prefer, how do you protect aquifers with underground parking?
So the, the aquifer one is just, it means that there's just a shallow groundwater table in that area. Um, and so, you know, they may have to de-water, um, and that's why you see that there. They, so there, that is addressed as part of the geotechnical studies that are conducted. When they do the geotechnical studies, they're required to do borings and they'll find out how deep that groundwater table is. And based on that groundwater table, the height of, the depth of that groundwater table, they might need to de-water or do some special building consider, building design considerations to make sure that the building is stable.
Well, I'm more concerned about the aquifer itself. I mean, what do you mean might have to do? Don't we require them to do something if they're in that?
I think it's, it's, again, it's, it's situ, it's site specific. Things like soil conditions are so spice, site specific, like the groundwater table on one side of the street might be fifty feet under, whereas on the across the street, it might be seventy feet under. So that's why the building and safety department does require, you know, geotechnical studies to be conducted before you pull, pull the, pull the building permit.
And I assume there's some remediation?
Right, yeah. I mean, if, if there is de-watering required, generally they are required to get a permit, a de-watering permit from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, that was a mouthful, to de-water and to make sure that they are de-watering correctly, I guess. I don't know if it's correctly, but make sure that they're allowed to de-water.
What does de-water mean?
De-water means they're literally pumping water out of the aquifer.
And where's it go?
It could go in the sewer. Um, so that's why a permit is necessary, because if they're putting it in the sewer, they want to make sure that it's not contaminated water.
Okay, I sort of, sort of get it. You want a quick question to that?
Yeah, I have a quick question. What do we do in case we have this big natural disaster like somebody's having in Florida right now for the hurricane? We have a big earthquake. How's, how do you handle communication and how this OEM, where are they? That they can handle all of this? Is that part of the?
So we have a, a crisis communications plan and it's something we exercise regularly. So we have, we have many different layers of communication methods within the city of Santa Monica. So our website, um, our SM Alerts, which we use regularly to send out public safety alerts, it has three different levels. So one is an opt-in level, so you can subscribe for SM Alerts. However, um, you can also, we have the capability to blast an alert to every landline and cellphone that's registered for utility service. And then we also have the ability to send out what's called a WIA, a wireless emergency alert, similar to an Amber Alert, where we can pick a geographic area and send an alert to everyone's cellphone with that really annoying tone, um, that wakes everybody up, right? So we have that capability. Um, but again, that's assuming that we're having, you know, cellphone service, we have the ability to access internet, things of that nature. Um, we don't just rely on that. So we also have an AM radio station, sixteen eighty AM, that usually gives a very boring traffic recording. Um, we have the capability to post messages on that should we need to. Um, even to the basic level of working with our libraries and our parks to set up information hubs, usually after a major disaster event, people congregate in parks and libraries and spaces, schools, for example, um, places where they're trying to get information, where we would, you could even set up a whiteboard, um, sharing where those shelter locations are, where points of distribution are located, um, emergency evacuation routes, et cetera. So we always want to go with the easiest and the way we can get information out to the most people, but we build in redundancy, uh, just in case those, those methods are not usable.
I had a few more questions.
Thank you.
Um, on page two-nine, uh, we know that state law requires realtors to disclose to home buyers whether or not they're on, in a fault zone.
Right.
Why don't we apply that to people who are building rental housing or tenants disposable? I don't understand why renters aren't, shouldn't get the same disclosure from a rental property.
Well, that requirement about the property disclosure is pursuant to state law.
Understand, but can't we expand on that and then say that renters have to be notified as well?
I mean, I suppose you could add that as an action item in the safety element.
Oh, it just seems fair.
Um, I mean, yeah, I mean, you could make that recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I only have a couple more. Um, when we, when we looked at the water sources study, I think that's on page two-thirty-four, it was done in twenty, twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-five. Does this usage, um, pie chart reflect the huge amount of new housing being created by AB twelve eighty-seven? Did we anticipate that?
You talk about the water use?
Yes.
Chart.
On two-thirty-four.
And sorry, what was your question of anticipates?
Whether, I mean, obviously we're seeing much bigger buildings than we were before because of AB twelve eighty-seven.
That, that pie chart is of historic usage, so it's not reflective of future usage. And so, um, we work in coordination with our public works department, our water resources department, and every five years they have to update their urban water management plan. And whenever they update that plan, they come to planning and say, what are your forecasts for development? And so that's, so when we get, when you're to your question, um, does it account for future development? It, the urban water management plan accounts for future development in the sense that they, they come to planning and ask us for our future forecast, like what's in the pipeline. So, um, their last urban water management plan that was just done, I think a year ago, does account for the housing element projections.
Okay. Um, and then my final question, I think it's probably a rhetorical question, is, um, one of the public comments was the effect of a large building next to a small building and cutting off sun, sun and potentially creating mold or, you know, whatever happens when you don't have sun. Um, and we're going, we're seeing a lot of very tall buildings adjacent to not very tall buildings that are going to be in the shade twenty-four hours a day. Um, and I don't assume there's any mitigation we can do about that because it's state law to allow these buildings? Is that correct?
Well, the mitigation would be the phase one environmental site assessments.
I understand, but that doesn't help the person next door who's not getting any sun.
Well, I mean, yeah, but I mean, if, in order to have mold, you have to have a water leak. And so you would hope that the person living there would fix their water leak.
Well, there's the other issue, of course, is the total lack of the ability to use solar panels if you're in a smaller building next to a tall building, but that's not a safety issue.
No.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you, first of all. I mean, this is really good reading. I've been, I sent a question earlier that I want to raise in terms of the, like a worst case, worst case, worst case scenario. And I know that it's might be, some of it's going to be a safety element question, some of it is a local hazard, hazard mitigation question, some of it's obviously an OEM question and I want to unpack them. But there are some pieces, listening to this presentation, which was really good, um, that I want to, I want to pull out. So here's the, here's the scenario, okay? Um, it's the middle of the Olympic Beach volleyball finals on North One, okay, which for whatever reason, we've agreed to host. It's an excessive heat event at the same day with rolling blackouts. By the way, three hours ago, NASA issued a warning of a solar storm surge, which we, I didn't see anything about solar storms in the safety element, but let's throw in a solar storm surge for the sake of argument. And just as the, you know, the gold medal match is underway, there is a seven-point-oh earthquake that bursts the Stone Canyon Dam and immobilizes multiple metro trains. Because if you listen to what they're saying, their headway is going to be, there's no north-south crossing in Santa Monica during the Olympics, because they're going to be running trains every thirty seconds. And now those immobile, now those now immobile metro trains are blocking the intersections of Colorado at Lincoln, Eleventh, Fourteenth, Seventeenth and Twentieth. That's none, that's the, that is theoretically possible, right? And then we could add liquefaction, we could add a tsunami, but that's the, like the worst case scenario. So here's what I'm curious about.
Wildfire coming down too.
Yes, yes. Let's, let's add a wildfire.
Yeah.
Right? And we're out of cat food. Um, so, so I'm curious about where the element, and I recognize a lot of this is an OEM question. I'm sure there are days where you sit around trying to imagine the worst thing. Mass evacuation routes, because we suddenly would have a population surge in Santa Monica that is much, much larger even than our normal workday, weekday, uh, population. Um, hospital access from the south and east sides of the city. Uh, Stewart Street is designated as an evacuation route, but it is, um, potentially underwater from Stone Canyon Dam. It's potentially blocked by a metro train car. Do we have a sense of how long it would take the dam water to recede? Do we minutes, hours, days? Has this been remodeled since the four oh five was, um, redone? Do we know if there's any change to the ground, um, absorbance? Do we know if public works can push metro cars out of the way? Uh, if, if metro breaks down? Can we regulate metro headways within Santa Monica? I mean, I think my big overarching question here, listening to the presentation is, and I looked up, I sort of looked for mentions of metro, I, I actually think that the line is infrastructure that we need to account for in the safety element because of the risks along the line, not just the facility. The intersection risks, other kinds of risks. So throwing all of that, I mean, anybody want to add a piece of disaster?
Four horsemen coming out of the sky.
Okay. Landing at the airport.
Zombies, meteor. And, um, so Sean, would love to hire you.
Hi Lindsay.
As our, hi, I would love to hire you as our next exercise consultant, uh, for an emergency operations center drill. Those are similar scenarios to the trainings that I've been to in Anniston, Alabama, et cetera. But, um, so first of all, I apologize. Um, I did not introduce myself properly and that's because I was part of the two AM crew from yesterday. Lindsay Call, Chief Resilience Officer. I oversee our Office of Emergency Management, two divisions. Um, I oversee our nine-one-one operations for police, fire, EMS, uh, call taking and dispatching, and then, um, our emergency preparedness, planning and response operations. So, sorry for missing that. For the special event plus disaster plus disaster. So we have an emergency operations plan that is the framework for any type of disaster, right? We, we like to call disasters organized chaos, where we have a structure within it and then we have all of these random scenarios coming at us and we figure out the best way to manage them, uh, with a focus of protecting, uh, lives and protecting property and the environment. So when we, just a little bit about disaster response, we activate what's called an emergency operations center. So it is not OEM acting alone. In our response, we have at least, it's thirty-five seats in our permanent emergency operations center, uh, at least three people deep in all of those seats. And based on the disaster, we identify who's best suited to, to sit. So DOT has a robust, uh, team that would be involved. We pull in representatives from our hospitals, uh, the American Red Cross, um, you know, police, fire, public works. Um, you can't do anything without public works. So it is just, I, it's not a siloed effort. It is the best example of multi-departmental coordination, um, that we have, and I think COVID was a, a good example of that. So for special events, what we do, um, and this includes LA Marathon, which is a much smaller example.
Yeah.
Um, of what you described. So we have what's called an event action plan that is very robust and it's coordinated with any of our government partners who are also responding to this event. So LA City, West Hollywood, et cetera, Beverly Hills, just as the marathon example. And then we create contingency plans, um, exactly kind of step by step, how we would respond, um, to an event within the event. And that can, so for the Olympics and all of those events that you've described, I'm sure those will all be contingency events, that we will have not just a Santa Monica plan, but a regional plan of how we collectively are responding to those events. Because we are going to have, if the Olympics are in Santa Monica, we will have to coordinate with UCLA, who's providing housing, USC, who's providing media housing, our other partner cities who have venues, what the partners who are doing, um, evac, or our transportation of athletes and spectators to and from venues. So it's not an easy answer, right? Um, but there is a process and it is absolutely a concern. I mean, we are already talking through these types of scenarios, um, on a regional level. Any, oh, trains and towing and things like that.
The treating the line as a.
Yeah.
As a safety consideration.
Um, metro, that's the first time I've heard every thirty seconds on.
I was.
Trains compressing.
It feels that way. I, I don't know.
Yeah, okay, I was like, wow.
That was, no, 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 but I mean, they've, they've basically, I'm raising, it's a concern of mine because, because one of the things that they're saying is, is that they want to go car-free for the event.
Right.
I, I think whether or not the Olympics take place in Santa Monica, they are going to increase headways massively. And knowing what it's like to sit at Stewart, but also knowing what it's like to sit elsewhere, I think there's a really good likelihood that we're going to have, we're going to have trains moving through Santa Monica very frequently and frequently enough that we have to worry about fire, police and ambulance response times, um, on our, on our northbound, uh, streets that don't have an overpass.
Absolutely. You see that, I'm an Inglewood resident, you see that right now during any Sunday.
Yeah.
Um, so I have two mottos. Um, one is never let a disaster go to waste. And the other is special events are just disasters with balloons. And so the, the point is that the Olympics is a really good opportunity for us to collaborate with our partner agents, our agencies to say, what, what is metro? What's your scenario for here? What, at your facility within Santa Monica on the border, what, what equipment do you have to remove trains from this scenario? Speaking to the evacuation routes, right? If, are we able to put in special considerations that during an emergency events or when we declare an emergency, we can remove, uh, street parking, for example, to add additional bandwidth for evacuation routes and public safety traffic? Could that be used for an event similar to the Olympics? So these are all things that require a lot of planning and coordination and, and thoughtful work, because we don't also want to have unintended consequences on our residents to implement these changes. So it's not a very good answer, but there's just a lot, there's a lot that goes into it. There's a lot of planning to be done in the next four years. And, uh, yeah, we're, no matter what our role is, whether it is hosting the Olympics, having that number of visitors here just because they want to be in Santa Monica, or supporting our sister cities, if they're hosting a venue and they need us to support them in response.
That's super helpful. I think for the safety element, and I know the goal is to, to move this forward, I think the, the observation that I would offer, and I think this is probably a function of the required, the, the unique requirements of the safety element, are that it doesn't, and this is not a criticism of your excellent work, both of you, it doesn't address a polycrisis, right? It takes each hazard as an individual event when, I mean, we have lore about earthquakes during heatwaves, but, you know, the, the, a stone, Stone Canyon's not going to burst if there's a wildfire. It's going to burst if there's a, you know, seven points, I mean, I don't know what it's rated to, but the risk is if there's like a 7.5-plus earthquake, right? So, we're dealing, it, it's instantly a polycrisis.
A, a cascading event.
A cascading event, yeah.
You start with an earthquake, you get a tsunami, a Stone Canyon dam, and, you know, a landslide of the bluff.
Right.
Absolutely. And I think that's something we do look at more closely in the local hazard mitigation plan.
Okay.
So, for example, we look at a specific scenario with the Palos Verdes Fault Line for an earthquake, and then it triggering a locally induced tsunami. And what are the casualty fatality, building damage scenarios in that event versus if it doesn't ha, prompt a tsunami? So, we do start to look at that, and, and we're still in the writing process for the local hazard mitigation plan, so it's definitely something I can bring back.
Is there a place in this element where we, without rewriting the element, where we could encourage council to give direction, or give you support, really, for cascading event, multi-hazard event, polycrisis scenarios?
I mean, certainly you can make suggestions as to, if you want specific actions written in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a place that would let naturally go?
I mean, yes, I mean, we, the, the safety element is divided into four chapters. The fourth chapter is the goals, policies, and actions. So, if you want to add in a new action that speaks to that, you know, we could certainly do that.
Okay, I'll take a look while we have discussion.
And what, and Commissioner Landrus, what you described in terms of that is a good screenplay for the next rock movie. Sounds like, sounds like the next rock movie in the making.
Yeah, 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 no, I just, you know, you all saw Volcano, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I miss Volcano, I miss Tornado, I miss San Andreas, I miss all of those.
No, 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 but it was, it's a particularly good, it's, it, talking about Volcano in the middle of Lachma when the Ed Ruscha image of, of the fire, of, of Wilshire on, on, on fire, of, of Norm's on fire, right? Like, I wanted them to have a photo, of the photo of the old Lachma on fire from, from, yeah, it was just traumatic.
Commissioner Chaco? You finished? Oh, sorry.
Get on, on.
No, go ahead.
All right, I have heard. It's only a single problem. But I mean, we see more with, with fire responses, for instance, more people have.
The mic's off.
I'm very loud, though.
I can hear you.
Lithium batteries, what's the, what's the, what are we doing? I mean, those seem to be a problem that we're not really ready for yet.
In terms of cars, fires?
Fires, I mean, we had, there was a response down in, I want to say San Pedro, where the fire department showed up, had a truck that had a lithium battery. They couldn't put it out, and then the contents of the truck exploded, and it was a big problem.
I mean, we, I have not had that comment before, so I can't say that I, we prepared to address that. I mean, have you seen?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not the fire department, I'm part of City Manager's Office. But I would say that, that question got brought up in my last CERT class, and the fire marshal addressed it. I would, I would recommend that, that they be the representative to answer that question, because that is something that they do train for. But if there are opportunities for education and things like that, best be directed to fire public education.
Thank you. This, uh, safety element has really pulled together a lot of information in a, in a pretty efficient way, so applaud staff for that. I just had a couple of clarifications. One regarding the fault zones, and the other regarding the zoning amendment related to Phase 1 environmental. The fault zones, um, you note that none of the fault studies actually show evidence of it, but it's something that was identified back in 2018. Are the, are there regulations related to geotechnical studies really limited just to those blue areas that are shown on that map? Or do they reflect the fact that we don't really know exactly where they are?
So, they're, the citywide, we have what we call the geotechnical study, which is for any building permit that is pulled. And so, we have that. But if you're also within the zone, you're required to do what the, what is a fault rupture study zone? Um, uh, fa, fault, sorry, fault rupture study. And there are specific requirements for that study. As I said, you know, you might have to trench, you might have to do some drilling to see if there is actually a fault underneath your development or your house, or whatever it is that you're building. And so, um, and if there is a fault that is discovered, that means your building has to be set back a certain, certain foot. Like, it could be 200 feet, it could be 100, 100 feet, or it could be 500 feet. So, that's what this fault zone means. It doesn't necessarily mean that you have a fault underneath your property. It means that that, this is somewhere where they think the fault is. And so, that's where the, why the 20 fault studies haven't shown evidence of a fault is because it's, you know, perhaps it's that the edge of the blue, and that's not where the fault is. You know, perhaps the, the actual fault is a little bit more north. And so, that's, so that's what the fault study zone is. We call it the fault rupture study zone. Outgoes pre-early fault zone, yeah.
I see. So, the, the studies that were done were just site-specific studies?
They are spicy.
Triggered by the fact that they were in the zone?
Yes, yes.
Understood. So, on the flip side of that, the proposed requirement for the Phase 1 environmental, that's a citywide requirement on all residential properties and commercial areas.
So, the, the.
And so, I'm just curious whether there's, you did show a map that indicated that we have some idea where some of these hazards are. But the requirement is still regardless of whether you're near one of those or not, is it?
It's, the requirement would be, the new requirement that we're proposing to add is that it's for new residential in non-residential zones, so any commercial district. We are excluding residential because we wouldn't want to subject a single-family home to something like that, especially if they're in a residential neighborhood, which generally does not see evidence of past contaminated uses. So, if you look at this map, it also shows sites to have had prior contamination. And so, you'll see most of it is all concentrated in our commercial zones, which is why we are requiring the Phase Ones be only conducted in the non-residential zones.
But regardless of whether they are near any of these known sites?
Right, yes, regardless.
So, just one comment, I was struck by the contrast between the two approaches. Whereas in the case of the fault zones, even though we don't really know that they are located there, we limit those requirements only to the areas that are highlighted. But in the instance of, of Phase 1 environmental, it's a much broader requirement. So, it seems a little different, the approach is different there.
Yeah, the fault rupture study requirement is a state law requirement. And so, um, that is, we can't do anything about it, state law. And so, that's, it, to do a fault rupture study is pretty intensive. It does require some trenching, it does require big drilling equipment. And so, that's why, um, it is only for that, for, for properties within those zones. As I said before, all the rest of the city is subject to a regular geotechnical study to study liquefactions, soil, soil collapse, things like that, seismic design considerations.
Most structural engineers will require a geotechnical report, no matter what it is, even a single family.
Correct.
Thank you.
Hi.
Do you have a question?
I do. So, I couldn't help but notice, well, I've noticed in other ways also, that our tree canopy is, of course, more robust in our more upscale R1 neighborhoods, and our neighborhoods that have our more vulnerable residences also have a really terrible tree canopy. And, uh, the, one of the things I noticed is this is a very longstanding, deeply entrenched historic problem in the city. Like, if you look at, you know, The Trees of Santa Monica, the book that was written in 1956 and all its subsequent revisions, they don't even list the trees in those neighborhoods. The streets are omitted. It's just, they, so, I feel that perhaps in our action plan, we should specify in particular that we're going to stress adding those trees. And, um, and that also leads me to another question you were saying. So, that's really just a suggestion. You were talking about adding cooling requirements in addition to heat requirements, but, and of course, I'm not a scientist at all. But, um, in my personal experience during the heat wave we just had, in my un-air-conditioned house, it was very warm. But the one place where we could go to cool down was in the shadiest part of the backyard. And it was delightful, even in the hottest part of our heat wave we just had. And that's been a longstanding thing, we call it the outdoor swamp cooler. So, this tree idea just has so many revolving ideas. And, you know, we talk a lot about trees and how nice they would be. And is there a way to use the recommendations in this plan to try to push us forward in that really important work about trees that we're not really following up on?
Right, I mean, certainly, I think, I'm just checking the language here, but I believe this, the language about the extreme heat action plan does include consideration of expanding the tree canopy and the Pico neighborhood particularly.
What I'm saying is, and that there be an emphasis on our more vulnerable communities.
Okay, yeah, that would be.
Um, specific to our vulnerable communities, a lot of the discussion related to evacuation or people leaving their home to seek shelter, to seek a cooling center, et cetera, is based on a person's mobility. And so, the, the provision in here at looking at cooling requirements for residential really is speaking to the most vulnerable in our community who are unable to leave their home and can't go to a park and seek shade or their backyard or a cooling center. So, I just wanted to highlight that as it's a specific population that we're very sensitive to.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the other topic that I was interested in is the idea of evacuation routes and egress. And just sitting here, listening to you guys, I listed one, two, three, four, five areas in the city that I know even in the best of circumstances, at 11:00 in the morning, when everybody else besides me is indoors, there's like a, there are a lot of places where it's really hard to get in and out. For example, the beach, you know, there's a big bluff, and you have to go all the way this way and all the way that way to get in and out. Getting past the airport can be very challenging. If you're even, uh, west of Main Street, you know, there's like a big blockade of blocks that don't go through that way. Bergamot has a lot of streets that don't go through that require miles of driving in circles. So, are these things that we should be planning more for and thinking more deeply about in our city, our city planning as opposed to our disaster planning?
Right, I mean, so the, the evacuation routes you see here are just, as I said before, they're situational and dynamic, it could vary. So, you know, I think in the event of a disaster or, or emergency event, you would get notification through Santa Monica Alerts as to what is the best evacuation route for you.
Right, that wasn't my question, though. My question is, is our map not actually adequate in certain areas where it's naturally, it's trapping people? Because there, we have places that are less accessible than other places.
So, um, at a scenario, just specific, I do think that, um, actions that are highlighted on this slide, such as the emergency parking restrictions and being able to implement that, or signal, uh, sinking so that we can, uh, have an evacuation route that is very well-designated and can get people out of town. I will say that a full city evacuation is not very likely. And so, making, it's a risk, you know, benefit analysis that the, the scenarios that are highlighted here, and the scenarios that we've had to implement are more isolated, where it's a smaller area that needs to be evacuated. And, um, Traffic Services does an incredible job at identifying the best route with our partners in DOT. We work collaboratively all the time and, and coordinating that together. The other thing I want to highlight is that for tsunami, if there is an immediate, if there is an earthquake that triggers a local tsunami event, we do not want anyone to use a car to evacuate. The, everybody should seek refuge inland immediately by foot, bicycle, scooter, any means but car. We don't want people to get stuck. We have had to perform mass evacuation using PCH during the Woolsey wildfire. It is tremendous, uh, there was tremendous traffic. But, um, I don't know if there's necessarily planning considerations to street design that need to be considered, specific to this.
So, I think I understand your question now. So, part of the safety element, what it does is, we are required under state law to look at those residential developments that only have one way in and one way out. That is, that map is in the safety element. For the rest of the city, there's not a whole lot. It's really, because I mean, our str, our city is built, built off of a really good grid network. So, there's only a handful of parcels, I think 30, 40-something, that are within those areas that only have a single egress, single ingress out within a hazard zone. And those are the areas, I think, you can't see on the screen. To the north, like, the end of Foxtail, for example, those are the cul-de-sacs that really have only one way in, one way out. So, we recognize that those may be impacted, so those are highlighted in the safety element. However, as, as Lindsay was speaking to, you know, that's why we have an action in there, speaking to not just evacuation by vehicle. We have, you know, we are, we're seeking to collaborate with, you know, operators of other alternative transportation modes, such as like the scooters, the e-bikes, things like that. In the event of a disaster, someone could just scoot their way out, bike their way out, whatever is necessary.
So, basically, what I think I've learned, tell me if I got this right, is that what's more important is not necessarily that you have to go that way, but that there's more than one way to go. Is that, with that?
More than one way to go, in a, like, more than one safe way to go, hopefully. You want to make sure you evacuate safely, also through various other modes, too. Not just by, by way, by mo, by mode, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I take a follow-up on that? Is that okay?
Yep.
So, this actually was, um, I have some potential bullets to add to the, to the plans and what Commissioner Fresco was getting at. I had actually drafted a bullet, and I just wondered if this gets at your question. Something like, encourage public awareness of evacuation routes and the need for multiple options and modes in the event of a multi-hazard or cascading event, and the potential for, and the likelihood to, you know, to need alternative evacuation routes. Something, something like that.
Yes, stop, can you email that to me?
Yeah, I'll email, I'll, I'll email you all the bullets, but I want to run them by everybody first.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners? Can we entertain approval of the resolutions?
I want to raise some bullets, yeah.
If, if we may also just confirm that there is no public comment. Since you took questions, the next step would generally be public comment.
Okay, there is no public comment. Do I have to call out these resolutions?
No, we, we need to have discussion first.
Okay.
Yeah. Can I, I, can I run some bullets? Okay, so, a potential, and, um, I will email these to Rachel, but I just want to make sure these are in the right place. So, action item 6.11 is the list of. So, action item 6.11 is the list of stuff that goes in the LHMP in the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. I wanted to suggest a final bullet, ensure that the LHMP is actionable in the, um, in case of a multi-hazard or cascading event. Is that? Ensure that the LHMP, which is abbreviated in the, in the document, is actionable in the case of a multi-hazard or cascading event. It's the final bullet on 611. I'll, I'm looking around also to make sure I'm, everybody's cool with that. Okay, um, a new one in 6.2 point, in 6.2, collaborate with public and private partners to plan for potential multi-hazard or cascading events. Uh, the new bullet we just went over, can, encourage public awareness of evacuation routes and the need for multiple routes, options, and modes um, in the event of multi-hazard or cascading events. Yeah, that's Come to the mic, yeah.
I'm glued to that seat. Um, to add, uh, a special consideration about access, those people with access and functional needs.
Okay.
Um, to add that somewhere in the language.
With special consideration for individuals and families, or for people, for people with?
Access and functional needs.
And functional needs, okay.
And just for education purposes, that includes youth, mobility, elderly, persons with limited English proficiency, a whole bunch of pregnancy.
Okay, and then, this was just language following Commissioner Lambert. A new bullet right below it, consider expanding residential property dis-, residential property disclosure requirements related to hazard zone conditions to include prospective renters, not just prospective home buyers. Does that, does that get at it? Okay, all right. Want me to email these to somebody?
Uh, may, may I ask to confirm? The first, the first, uh, bullet point you referenced was in action 6.1.1 and the remaining were in 6.2?
No, so the first one is 6.11.
Right.
It's a 6.1
Point one.
6.1.11, sorry, yeah. Then the next one would be a new bullet, 6.2.10. That is in the emergency response section, 6.2 is emergency response. And then, 6.3 is all public awareness. And so, those are two new bullets, eight and nine. And I will email them, maybe we can put them up, or whatever makes sense.
You can send them, I can put them up.
I will hit resend on that email. I just, hang on one second, doing it right now.
But wait, there's another one.
There's another one, let's add it, yeah.
Um, uh, in 4.1.6, uh, something to the effect, it says, enhance and expand green spaces and the urban forest, parentheses, tree canopy. And I would add with special emphasis on areas with, uh, vulnerable and lower resource communities.
Where is that?
Is it 4.1.6?
Yes.
So, just, there's a second bullet? It says, provide additional access to shade and clean drinking water in public spaces with locations targeted to vulnerable populations.
Yeah, but we really need to add street trees in particular.
Okay. Oh, so you're adding to the first bullet?
Right.
I'm looking. What's the bullet number?
Uh, it's, it's under 4.1.6, it's the first bullet.
Enhance and expand green spaces in the earn, urban forest tree canopy. And what's the additional language?
Uh, with particular focus on vulnerable communities and areas with people of low resources, or however we said it in the housing element that I
Uh, with particular focus on vulnerable communities and special consideration for people with access and functional needs. Pat?
Also, uh, we, low resource communities, because that's really what defines the communities that don't have trees.
So, low resource rather than vulnerable, or both?
Both.
Okay.
They're the same. V- vulnerable seems to be the word they use.
Okay.
In the housing element, we call them low resource.
Right, so those are two different concepts, right? So, vulnerable communities refers to, I believe in this context, the people, whereas the low resource refers to the environment.
Right.
I have another thing, Sean.
I'm just taking notes, so I'll send them as soon as we're done. Yeah, keep going.
Um, on 3.1.2, and maybe it's just, and maybe staff can answer the question for me. We require environmental site assessments for projects in non-residential districts. Is there some reason we left out multifamily districts, R3 and R4?
Right, I tried to, I think I was trying to explain that. I, it's because the, most of the multifamily residences, districts have historically been residential. And so, given the map of the hazardous materials sites, um, it doesn't really show past uses having been an issue.
What about the clay pits in Pico neighborhood?
That is included as a, those clay pits are actually in the Bergamot area.
Oh, okay.
Hang on, well, that's not entirely true. Because if, I don't know if I'm allowed to say this, because I live less than 500 feet away, but I will say it. There is a big pink box at 3,000 Ocean Park Boulevard, which in the lifetime of the, um, this element could very well be proposed for housing, depending on what the owner decides to do with it. It's the, it's the business, Santa Monica Business Park, it's Boston Properties. If they decide to put housing there, that is a cleanup site, so
Is that a residential zone? But it won't be R3 or R4?
It is not currently a residential zone. So, it would be required.
It's a former clay pit.
So, it would be required, yeah.
It's a Boeing something or other.
Oh, that was one other thing. It said that we stopped our clay pit businesses, our brick businesses in 1952. But I believe it was, I forgot, I was going to check before I came, '72 or '74? It was much later than '52, that the last one shut down.
I trust your historical knowledge.
Well, I, I'm not, I'm talking off the top of my head, I need to check, but it was definitely after
If you can provide that information, I'll be very helpful, thank you.
For clarity Sorry.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we should add the word mixed use? We, we should say in non-residential and mixed-use districts for, app for
I think the business park is a particular example of where it should always happen because of the, yeah.
So, just to clarify, residential and non-resi-, those are defined terms in the zoning code.
Okay.
So, it covers, non-residential is anything other than an R-zone.
Oh, okay, great, then we're covered.
We're okay.
So, we're okay.
Okay.
So, here's what I have, so not, no change to that. I have action 4.1.6, I will hit send as soon as everybody's on the same page here. Amend the bullet to say, uh, to add a comma at the end with particular focus on vulnerable and low resource communities and special consideration for people with access and functional needs. Um, we're adding a bullet to the bottom of 6.1.1, there's a list of bullets, we're just adding one more. Ensure that the LHMP is actionable in the case of a multi-hazard or cascading event. And then, a new bullet, 6.2.10, collaborate with public and private partners to plan for potential multi-hazard or cascading events, or and cascading events. Um, a new bullet, action 6.3.8, encourage public awareness of evacuation routes and the need for multiple routes, options, and modes in the event of multi-hazard or cascading events with special consideration for people with access and functional needs. And a new bullet, 6.3.9, consider expanding residential property disclosure requirements related to hazard zone conditions to include prospective renters, not just prospective home buyers. Anything else? Sending.
What we do without you?
Are we done?
We're almost done.
I think we're done. I mean, we got to vote, right?
Thank you.
Have any, have any issues with the, the resolutions, or?
That's it, we just, we're to add these to the resolution.
Thank you, Sean.
Okay.
Or you tell us what we do, what, what do we do? How do we?
You can go ahead and vote.
Do we, do we just approve this?
So, the, the motion can cover, the motion can cover adoption of both resolutions, if you so choose.
Yes.
The one for the zoning ordinance and one for the resolution. I'm speaking while the planning manager is getting the language up on the screen. Not to rush her. Um, so she's, she will be, yes, uh, so that, though, you would be making the motion, if you so choose, with the changes on the screen, which would be made only to the, um, resolution uh, recommending that the city council adopt the safety element.
Second.
Do we, can you?
Then moved it.
Why in 6.3.9 do you say only consider?
Because that's the language of the element. When they're, when they're doing policy changes, they'd said consider.
Okay.
I was not, I would do it, but, yeah.
Okay, now we can vote.
That's everything on the screen, okay, great.
Are we ready to, uh?
Yeah, Commissioner Reese moved it and I seconded it.
Okay.
Commissioner Chaco?
I'm in support of it.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landrus?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Tolkien.
Okay, yes.
I'm moving to the desert.
We're, extreme heat events, remember?
The desert's moving to you.
Oh, and floods, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Our resolutions.
No written communications, no planning commission members discussing that items. I adjourn the meeting, it's now
Thank you.
It's now 20 after eight.
20 after eight, okay, cool. Just showing in your worst-case scenario.